Hello and welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, June 15, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We are in person for the first time since March. So, welcome everybody. We are practicing social distancing and we will call this meeting to order. And would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Well, before we do anything further with business, we need to appoint ourselves a clerk.
I'm going to chair. I'll make the motion to appoint Peter Sturrock Jr. as the clerk until it's being necessary to be organized again.
And I second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you.
Would you take us through the agenda, please?
I will. We're going to switch this? Should I just switch it right now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, we've got appointments first. We're going to switch it from the meeting with the Finance Committee. So, we'll start with our first appointment is meeting with Veterans Agent Chris Buckley to give us an update and request permission to accept a donation of a POW Chair for Town Hall. I will also provide updates on Veteran Services. Then, we have a contract signing with Police Chief Paul O'Brien. We'll follow that with a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to review and approve Chapter 44, Section 33B transfers. Action items?
Saying we have action items. You don't have to...
Okay.
We'll let you read all those soon enough. There's a bunch tonight, right?
I appreciate that. We do have quite a few action items.
Okay. Thank you very much. Chris, our Veterans Agent, would you like to come up?
Yes, please.
Thanks. Great to see you.
How's everybody doing today?
Doing good.
First things first, we're having our second Food for Vets Drive Wednesday, the 17th, at the COA. Everything's set up for that. I appreciate all the support the town has brought on for that. I spoke with the organizers. We've already registered more than we did have the entire time for the last event. So, we are building on that. All of our Chapter 115 have been recertified until December. So, that is, you know, a good thing and something that we can, you know, don't have to worry about now. Now, to jump into, you know, why I requested the appointment, is Michelle Hamilton from Rolling Thunder is here and she would like to do a quick presentation on donating a POW MIA Chair to the town of East Bridgewater. So, I'll be followed by Michelle.
And I want you guys a chair to sit, too.
And this is the portable chair. There's a stadium chair and a portable chair talking over with folks. This would be the chair that we would display in.
Okay. So, this chair is the Middleborough Chair and it's dedicated to William Smith, who's missing in action from Vietnam. So, Rolling Thunder has a program called the National POW Chair of Honor and these chairs, we put in in various locations. The Patriots have one, the Bruins have one, a lot of town halls have them. And what we do is, we will donate the chair as well as the POW flag that goes along with the chair. A lot of VSOs will put in the stanchions and the American flag and it will become property of the town. It just commemorates, right now there's 82,000 still missing in action from all wars. So, it reminds people, first of all, that we still, as a community, have people that are missing that have been held prisoner of war. And it kind of signifies for the families, a reminder that we do care about this issue. Rolling Thunder has actually been very active as far as bringing recognition to the POW MIA issue. It's our mission as well as helping America's veterans. So, we support all kinds of veterans' causes, too. This chapter was actually very involved in the legislation that was passed last year to fly the POW flag over all of our federal buildings and national monuments. So, for us, we'd like to donate this chair to you guys. We'll have one specifically made for your town if you want to dedicate it to a specific missing in action or someone who's been held prisoner. We can do that, too. It takes about four to six weeks to get the chair. We usually do a little ceremony and present the chair and, you know, invite all the POW MIA families and make it a community-wide event. Of course, social distancing and we can do it outside if we need to. There's that capability. So, that's why I'm here to just kind of answer any questions that you might have, help in any way that I can. And hopefully, you guys want the chair.
Oh, absolutely. Not a question at all. That's terrific.
Hundred percent.
Great. Any discussion on this? Questions?
No, I think it would probably be a good idea to have the ceremony right out of a 9/11 memorial.
That's a great idea.
Perfect.
Yeah, the Commercial Club, too. I've been member for many, many years. I'm sure they'd be interested, Chris, to talk to you as well about, you know, being involved in this. You've been very active in the community.
Okay.
A lot of services as well. Maybe provide some sort of food or whatever else you want to do for sure.
It's always significant, too. I've gotten to know the Smith family in Middleborough and every time we do anything or we've had a traveling POW flag, they come and sign the book and stuff. And I think it's just, you know, it's our mission to not forget about those folks, no matter what. You know, we'd like a full accounting of all of them. So...
Sure. I think, yeah, the vacant chair, it's a great visual reminder of the ones that didn't come back.
And it brings around conversations with young people and, you know, that, too. So, this is the indoor chair and this is the chair that can be moved from place to place. And Jason will bring it different places when we have different events and stuff. They do have an outdoor stadium-type chair, but I think that this is what you guys are looking at.
If we're doing different ceremonies and stuff, we can move it.
Right. So, if you decide you want it, we'll work with Chris. We'll get the chair ordered. A lot of the verbiage is standard, but the dedication part isn't. So, if you guys decide as a group that you want it dedicated in a specific way, we can do that, too.
Okay. I think we'll work with you, Chris and Brian, to decide on that. Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right. Awesome. Thanks. Thanks for your time.
We really appreciate you coming in. Thank you for that.
That's all I have.
That's it for you? Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Would our Police Chief like to approach?
Sure.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good evening, Chief.
I believe we're here to sign a contract.
That'd be nice.
That would be great.
Yep.
Before we do that, do you want to just give us a quick update on what's going on with the department and, you know, how you see this moving forward with yourself now, you know, with a signed contract as chief?
Yeah, I got some notes here and I'll cover a couple of the questions I'm sure you might have.
We figured we weren't going to do any formal questions. We just thought we'd just give you an opportunity to tell us what's going on.
Well, everybody knows what's going on. We're dealing with right now. I have some notes here. COVID-19, it's pressed everybody's budget. Main priority with that is responding to calls, keeping all the offices safe, making sure, you know, that they're comfortable in the work. It's also caused in-service and the academies to be canceled. So, we're dealing with all our in-service training in-house. So, we have it all online. So, it's taking a little bit of extra time. But they've given us through September to deal with that. We're also dealing with the quality issue. And I can say 100%. I put out a press release statement out there. I mean, what happened in Minneapolis was dead wrong. You know, in Massachusetts, we're not even trained that way. The officer's in jail. He should be in jail for what he did, I believe. Every person, is our department believe that every person gets treated equally. I don't care your race, your gender, sexual orientation, whatever it is. You're a citizen in this town. We're going to take care of you as best as we can. We want to have a partnership with the town. We're going through national accreditation where our policies are reviewed yearly. So, we have the latest and greatest policies that are national standard that everybody will follow. Within the next couple of days with Sergeant Jenkins, we're going to be putting our policies online. Everybody can see how we operate. Public records, everything's public today. We all know how many public records we have to deal with every single day. Somebody wants something, they can have it. We have nothing to hide. I have an open-door policy. My guys can come in any way they want. I believe that is a major leadership thing. I'm from old school, I guess, from Mass Maritime Academy. I believe in the chain of command, open door, and listening. Listening is a key part of management. The principles of management, to me, I believe, integrity, accountability, transparency, work ethic, and pride. And I have pride in my department. During this, all these episodes, all of my officers have shown up 100% of the time. Unless there's any questions?
Good. I thought that press release that you did was great and...
Yeah, I mean...
I was at the rally on Saturday and I commend your department for the way you kept the people on the common safe, but there was no interference. I thought it was really, really well handled and I appreciate that and...
No, and it's a common event up there. We handle them all the same way. We shut it down. So, we don't have to worry about anybody getting hit by a car.
Yep.
That's our biggest fear is, you know, we knew there was going to be a lot of little kids there. And, you know, I know how little kids are. They start running around. So, I have no problem. I mean...
It was handled really well. You guys have any follow-up questions or comments?
Well, I've, since the Chief took over the interim job, we're in communication all the time. It is an open-door policy. I think that he has rose to the occasion. It was a very quick move when Chief Allen left. And I think you've proved all along that you got all the training that you needed as a Deputy Chief to move right into this position without any questions asked whatsoever. I commend you for that. You've done an outstanding job and keep up the good work.
Same thing here. I mean, I've known Paul a long time. You know, he's a stand-up guy, no-nonsense, falls right in line with, I believe, with the last two Chiefs we had in office, which only goes to show that we've got a, you know, a good system in place. And I look forward to continuing to work with you, Paul.
Yep.
Me, too. I look forward to working with you.
No, I know. I enjoy the job. I believe policing is a calling. So, that's my...
Yeah, we've talked about that. Yep. Excellent. All right.
You make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the contract signing for Police Chief Paul O'Brien?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Congratulations. You have a contract. We have a Police Chief. Very good. You have copies for us to sign?
Copies of the contract to sign? Okay.
Talk amongst yourselves while we...
I'm just looking around and seeing the great support that the Chief has behind him. And that says a lot for his leadership. A lot of respect that the officers and the force have for him. And it's a great thing to see. It's up to the Chair to sing a song if we were here to...
You don't want this chair singing a song. In the future, I could bring recordings of my husband singing. We could intersperse it throughout the meeting now.
No, no, no. Good enough. Good. Maybe the new guy's gonna have to sing.
The concerts are all being canceled. He might just want to show up.
Maybe the new guy's gonna have to sing shortly.
It'll zoom down. Got hand sanitizer.
If we haven't caught it by now, I don't think I'd have. Any more questions?
No. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your trust.
Oh, yeah. You've got it.
You can get that badge fixed.
All right. We will move to our joint appointment with the Finance Committee.
I usually have one in my pocket.
What's that? Oh, thank you. Is this a drink or is it hand sanitizer? It doesn't look like it.
It's a nip. It's a nip.
All right. He doesn't want any. Do you want hand sanitizer?
No, I'll find that.
All right. It's like playing pool.
Thank you.
You are terrible. All right. So, we have our joint appointment with the Finance Committee to review and approve Chapter 44, Section 33B transfers. Phyllis, you're here. Are you going to lead us through this or Laura or?
Well, it's just the moving around of money to plug any little small, mostly small holes. We do have a few, a couple of transfers that we had wanted. Most of it's just small deficits. Yeah, it's routine. We do have the contractual obligation. We have people retiring this year. So, we did need to add some to that. And we're not sure that we're going to have a settlement a little bit later. So, we would move some money into that so we could keep that.
Okay.
But other than that, it's pretty much straightforward.
Great. Laura, did you want to add anything from Finance Committee?
Uh, no. We've reviewed the majority of the line items unless the committee has any outstanding... But I think we're comfortable as is. Great. Any other...
Any questions, David?
No.
Peter?
No.
All right. Then, I'll motion, so I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve the transfers as presented on the handout dated June 15, 2020. Total amount of $213,145.
That was a second by Dave. Any additional discussion? Okay. All those in favor from Pink Con?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the Chapter 44, Section 33B as transfers as presented by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Okay. Ready to move to action items.
Okay. Actually, I have one. Board of Selectmen, solitation with the Town Moderator will consider reducing the quorum for the upcoming special and annual town meeting pursuant to the emergency legislation passed by the General Court and signed by the Governor on June 5, 2020. A copy of this legislation is attached. Legislation permits the town, with the approval of Board of Selectmen and Town Moderator, to reduce the quorum contained in the bylaw from 150, East Bridgewater, 150 vote for voters for special town meeting articles over 100,000 due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. East Bridgewater Special, an annual town meeting is scheduled for June 23, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the junior senior high school auditorium. Social distancing practices will be in effect, including possibly the use of other rooms at the high school.
Mr. Noble, I'll second that. Mr. Noble, do we have to, at this point, tell them that we have reduced that quorum to 10 people?
We do. We do need to do that, yes.
Okay. That's not included here. So, I'll just add to that motion that Board of Selectmen is going to approve the reducing of the quorum for those articles over 100,000 to 10 people.
15?
15? Okay. 15 people.
All right. We have a motion and a second. In terms of discussion, we do have a letter here from Bob Looney, the Town Moderator, saying that he approves the act of amending the quorum as outlined. So, and we needed that from him. Is there any discussion, David?
Nope. Took a long time for it to get here.
10%.
Okay.
It's reducing the quorum to 10% and we don't want to, we have done a very good job. The Board has done a very good job of removing things from the warrant that would be overly contentious. And we're trying to make sure that we cut the warrant down to just those things that are a necessity to pass, including an operating budget. We know full well that we'll probably have to come back and reform a budget maybe as late as November when the state aid numbers are clearer to us. The Board has indicated that we need to be careful going into the budget as projected as we are now, that we would not want to make commitments that we cannot keep in our budget. And I have reviewed those with the Chairman of the Finance Committee and with the Finance Committee in general session. And they are understanding of our desire to curb spending and hiring come the first of the fiscal year so that when cuts are known, we will not have to make more draconian cuts. It's a real tough situation. And I can do this in the Administrator's Updater now. The Senate, through Senator Timmeltie's office, gave me a projection and a presentation on why local aid will be cut across the board 15.7%, which would be over 1,700,000 for this town. So, we have to be very careful going into the new budget year that we are fiscally responsible and very cautious. But the budget that we are presenting is based on items that we knew prior to the COVID emergency. So, I can't project a budget based on what I do not know. Therefore, we're going to pass an operating budget based upon our original projections. And then, we are going to immediately ask the Board for a hiring freeze and a spending freeze that we pull back immediately pending the state's reveal of the number.
I think it's a smart way to go. We don't know what we don't know. So, why, you know, do anything drastic until we know what kind of numbers we're dealing with. And we will have social distancing measures set up at town meeting. And as Mr. Walsh pointed out earlier, it's a Tuesday, not a Monday because Town Council wasn't available on Monday. So, hopefully, people are being mindful of that date and people will come and we'll get it done.
We will have masks. We will have the iPads ready for registration so that we can move quickly through the check-in procedure. We can adopt some of the effort that the Town Clerk used in the town balloting so that we maintain social distancing. And for those that either can't wear a mask or refuse a mask, we have another room set up so that we can give them comfort as well.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Noble, when you had the conference with Senator Timmeltie, the 15.7% he is thinking may happen, is that taken anything into consideration on what help the state may get from the federal government?
Taking nothing into account from the federal government, which is another reason why it's an unknown.
Right.
The problem I run into is, you know, the original 15.7 sounded very credible to me. And it was Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee of the Senate that was making the presentation. But the very next day, the House passed Chapter 90, meaning money with the supplemental aid at 100%.
Right.
So, the left hand isn't talking to the right hand. And so, we need to be cautious about going into this unknown territory that I don't want to get six months into the year, fat, dumb, and happy, and then all of a sudden have to cut even deeper or more because we wasted six months. So...
I just wanted to get that, you know...
Right. We're pulling back...
...on a positive note that, you know, the feds may be coming in and giving us some help.
Right. I think the feds will also remember that, yes, we have a, the state's projected budget is $16.2 billion. But we lost Tax Day in the fiscal '20 year. Tax Day is now in the '21 year. So, there are two Tax Days in '21. So, it's somewhat disingenuous to say we're so sure. We're not. We just pushed the money into July. So, there's going to be that recapture. There'll be a draw against the state's rainy day fund. There'll be that recapture. There will be necessities even if the federal government gives us money under the HEROES Act or any other kind of additional incentive. There still will be some pain in the Commonwealth. But that hasn't ruled out additional fees and/or taxes from the state. So, we don't know what the state's going to do. The state themselves are saying that they're going to adopt a 112 budget. So, we shall see.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question. This change in the quorum is just for this town meeting, right?
Correct.
Correct. Nope, it is just for this specific...
Not unless a motion on the floor of town meeting in an article changes that quorum.
Ah.
Now, everybody will show up.
Well, you know, in towns where they don't have a quorum, they tend to get more people at their town meetings than in towns where they do, which is just such an interesting consideration of human nature. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. The motion carries. All right.
Action item. Approve for, approve for Miss Wedge of Open Doors Yoga Studios to use Town Common for one-hour yoga classes. Classes will be held under the standard and guidance on outdoor classes. Times and dates of the events are July, June, excuse me, July, August, and September. Tuesdays, 6:00 PM, Thursdays, 7:00 PM, and Fridays, 6:00 PM with rain dates for Saturday at 10:00 AM.
Second.
See it. We've got a calendar here.
Motion is made in second of the day. Discussion?
We'll second that. It's pretty self-explanatory, I think.
We approved before. Is this just additional dates?
These are additional dates.
Okay. And have they done the first one yet?
They did. They got a really good response.
Excellent.
She said the classes were sold out within five minutes.
That's great.
So, that's why she reached out and wanted additional classes. So, she's really excited about having more.
Excellent. Good. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Approve minutes of the June 1, 2020, 4:30 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Some of these I can't vote on, right? I mean, if I'm...
You can. You're not voting to their accuracy. You're only voting to accept.
Good question. I asked it when I was new, too. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Approve minutes of the June 9, 2020, 4:30 PM Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Release minutes of the December 16, 2019, 4:30 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Release minutes of the January 6, 2020, 4:50 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, 4:50. You guys...
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
I guess so. Wow.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, yep. Release minutes of the January 27, 2020, 5:15 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Release the minutes of the February 10, 2020, 6:55 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Release minutes of the February 24, 2020, 7:45 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Release minutes of the March 9, 2020, 7:40 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Well, if a meeting and, like, so if we roll into our executive session meeting, right from our Board of Selectmen's...
That's why.
We don't actually post, we didn't actually post a meeting for 7:40. Although, we could. Maybe we should. Look, because the next one's 4:55.
Right. I was waiting for, like, 4:27.
I don't get that.
Rebecca's precise, but not that precise.
That could be tonight. We'll do an exact time for you tonight, Peter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think I'm on this one. Release minutes of the April 21, 2020, 4:55 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Approve the Board of Health to use the outside of Satcham Rock and have access to basement of main building to hold the rabies clinic for dogs and cats. You got that one right. Dogs and cats, right. On, man, it took you a little while.
Dude.
On June 29, 2020, from 5 to 7 PM.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I can speak on this quick. So, the Board of Health has been doing this for many years. Sue and Bobby do a great job. I think Miles will be there with them as well.
Great. I saw somebody on Facebook asking if this was going to happen. So...
Yeah, yeah. They put it together luckily for this year as well.
Is Miles going to be on the side of the cats or the dogs?
I don't know yet. We know where Bobby Philbrook will be.
That's right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Appoint Joan Smith as permanent member for the Associate Member of the Council on Aging due to a vacancy effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023.
Second.
This is a vacancy created by the passing of Bob DeFazio. So, we are sad to see... So we are sad to see him go. He was on that council for a very long time. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. The following approve, the following board committee member reappointments. Just list them all. Want me to just go through all of them? You want to prove each one of them?
All of them, sorry.
Yeah, you have to read them.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just didn't know if we were going to prove each one as we go or just do them all at the end.
We can do them in one block.
James A. Ross Jr. as an alternate member of the Board of Appeals effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. Stephen Sears to the Conservation Commission effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. Fire Chief Tim Haron as the Director of Emergency Management, Forest Warden, and Right to Know Coordinator effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Building Commissioner Patrick Rainey for, to the Federal Handicap Compliance Program effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Frederick J. Telly as the Gas Inspector and Plumbing Inspector effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. W. Michael Doyle, excuse me, as the Assistant Gas Inspector, Assistant Plumbing Inspector effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Nancy Hill as Delegate to the Old Colony Planning Council Area Agency on Aging effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. David Abbott as the Parking Clerk, Hearing Officer, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Carol Julius as the Plymouth County Advisor Board Representative effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. David Cheedy as a Plymouth Advisory Board Alternate effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. John Shea to the Recreational Commission effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. Catherine Wolf to the Register of Voters effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. David Ahmawr as the Sailor of Weights and Measures effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. David Bentley Jr. as a Wire Inspector effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. And last but not least, F. Greg Paul as the Assistant Wire Inspector effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? So excited about that with the town area advisor. You know, the meetings are virtual now and it's much better.
Don't get them started.
Those meetings are better virtual. All right.
Not if you're reading.
What's that?
Not if you're the reader.
Oh, true. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. Town Administrator Report. Mr. Noble, how are you?
Thank you. First, I, great, thank you. First, I want to thank David Walsh again in public for the donation of 4,000 surgical masks.
That none of us are wearing.
We have them available in the event that someone comes to Town Hall and doesn't have a mask. The first week of our opening the front door of Town Hall has gone very well. There are markings on the floor, the glass is in the window, the availability of masks and hand sanitizer is there. And it's our goal to continue to take steps to keep the employees and the staff of Town Hall safe as we work through the rest of this pandemic, which doesn't seem to ever want to end. Rebecca has placed the second claim for our CARES Act reimbursement with Plymouth County. This one's a little less dramatic this time at only $8,000. We're beating her to come up with more money.
How many pages this time?
Page three, we will see a drastic increase.
Excellent.
So she has done an excellent job with this and she has pulled her hair out for this one. So very pleased. The, I think I reported on the meeting with Senator Timbulte and we did the transfers today. So those are predominantly my update. But two other items. Altus Dental Insurance is our employee plan. We have negotiated a 0% increase for this year. They had come in with a request of about 3% to 6% and we pushed back hard and we got a zero. So I want you to know that we are renewing that policy and with no increase in charges to either the town or the employees. Also, we had correspondence from Mary Jane Handy at the Division of Accounts at Massachusetts DOR asking us to file a, you know, a declaration with the Department of Revenue in the event that we should deficit spend in response to our COVID emergency. The deadline for the letter is the end of the month, 30th of the month. Carol drafted a letter for us to put on stationery from the Board of Selectmen indicating that we're asking permission to do it in the, in the event that we need to. However, in all sincerity, we've been able to cover everything without deficit spending. There are, you know, should we need to, indeed, this will give us the right to do that should things change.
Should.
But we need to have this letter in by the end of the month, no matter what our intent is. So this is to be signed by the chairman. But we want to make sure that it's on record that the board is supportive of this. So I will ask you for a vote to approve the letter and have Carol sign it.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Okay. We'll have you sign that afterwards. Excuse me. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
I do have a meeting with the Planning Board at 7:20 to discuss the rezoning of Central Street.
And you thought we wouldn't get you out of here.
And so I want to tell you that I don't want to be rude and I appreciate your expediting the meeting tonight.
You are welcome.
That's a change.
That's great. All right. Rebecca, announcements?
I've noticed that the next meeting we have is Monday, June 29. We still have more than a handful of reappointments that need to be submitted to the office. So if people could get those in, it would be appreciated. And we have the liaison appointments to do with the board. So if you want to pass those until the next week, we can do that. It's up to you guys.
Give us a little more time. I mean, I don't, you don't want to assume Peter's just going to automatically take everything that Bill did. And we don't want to assume, we want to keep everything that...
No, the only one I would say is, I think I haven't talked big yet, is just the SOW advisory.
I was going to, yeah.
I'd like to just probably jump on that one.